Electoral allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Okay, the first item is approval of the agenda.
We'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Mileage. Okay. You have on your desk, I believe, the normal mileage form that we have to fill out for the state according to Karen. It didn't get into the packet, but it's the same. Nothing has changed. So is there an amendment to add? The mileage form, mileage certification.
So moved.
No move. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. All those in favor of the amended motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to approval of minutes one twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes of one twenty-four, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second it.
And a second. Discussion. Dick, you got anything? No?
Good.
You're good. Bob?
Yeah, I'm good. I got it. I had it all ordered here.
Hey. Wow, go ahead. Wait a minute.
No, no, it's okay. There was nothing serious.
Okay, alright.
A couple punctuations.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I don't think that Zach Holtsworth attended the meeting, but the Zoom account that was being used for the meeting was in his name. So I think he should be deleted. That's it.
Good. All those in favor of approving the motion?
I got, I got one thing.
Okay, I'll come back.
Page three or four, it says.
Yep.
Um, I just need to look clarification. Third paragraph down, it says Jane and Larry Nickla have visited. It appears he needs to do some research for land use and zoning. Who is he? Well, what is that all about? That doesn't make any sense. That sentence. Jane and Larry, Jane and Larry Nickla have visited. Is that revisitation with you? Mike, George?
For this meeting, I I, I saw Jane and Larry this week. Or, no, end of last.
This is in the minutes of the twenty.
So.
In, in reference to your manager's report.
Oh, 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 they, they did visit and Jonas is doing some research on the land use. And in your packets this week is that attorney, hiring that attorney to help us with that.
Okay, so this should be, it appears he is Jonas. Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. Need to do some research for land use. Okay.
Okay.
Yep, I'm good.
You're good, Bob?
Yep.
Anything else? Anyone else? All those in favor of the motions with exceptions indicate by saying aye. Motion approved. Citizens' comments or concerns, items not on the agenda. Jane? Jane Nickeloff.
What did you want to say it?
Just so we can hear you, Jane.
Okay.
Can you now come up here?
Oh, okay.
The microphone probably won't pick you up very well back there.
Yeah, I've got one other issue. Came up today, which I'm sure you were aware of Thursday. But anyway. Basically, you guys, I think most of you have been aware of the problems I've been having with my neighbors with my neighbor's dog, correct? Everybody's well aware of it. The dog, when it's out, supposedly being muzzled, and I have been letting it go. Uh, tell you exactly. I have been an exceptionally good neighbor, but I've reached the end of my rope. Okay, the end of January, I think it was like the last Friday of January, the dog, I went outside to take my dog out my front door of my residence. The dog somehow got out of the house, did not come over to attack me, but wanted to. It almost went over the deck. Not muzzled. It was barking like it does insanely. I knew exactly what the bark meant and it was gonna head my way. They went out of the house running and screamed. I let it go again. The dog, anytime it's out in the yard, on the north side of the house, their house, it sees my animals, it goes crazy. Now, we did have a pile of wood stacked to the north side of my dog. That's where we stacked our firewood while it was dry. It also blocked the dogs' view of each other. Okay, today, the dog worked, business me, and issues me a ticket for my dog's barking again. Now, I have had it. That, I guess, is the one to complain. This is a petty issue. I should not have to be bothered with this stuff. I am prepared to go and fight it again. But my dogs have been out maybe twenty minutes, maybe at most, with this cold weather, three times a day, unless I'm walking them directly out of my house. I've been very patient with these neighbors. I've had it with that dog. It's gonna get loose. It's gonna hurt someone, yeah, or my animals. And I'm the one that gets issued a ticket for my dog's barking. Now, it's already been proven my dogs are working dogs. They can bark twenty-four seven if they want, if they're out barking at animals where they feel threatened. I never leave my dogs out unless I am outside. I'm really tired of this. So I want something done with that animal. Like I said, it's more the paid people than owning it, but I'm not gonna live like this. I've been through enough stuff with safety issues in this town. This is the last straw with that. So I want somebody to do something about it.
Comments? Uh, Mike?
I heard this today from, from Pete, and I heard a conversation between Pete and Chris on the phone. So I, I found out about it today. And, and Chris has been working with the police chief to help him through this process, learning how to deal with the issues and write the municipal tickets. So that's what I know about it was, um, it's, it's coming. The Pete, the police chiefs got the complaints, is how I, how I understood this. And then he got in touch with the animal control officer to have him follow up.
Right. And now, Jim, you wrote the letter and sent it to me after that last meeting, stating how the dog's supposed to be handled. It's supposed to be muzzled at all times. I've got a copy of it. If you want to refresh your memory. Okay.
Excuse me, Mike?
Yes?
Who's, who's Chris you're talking about?
Chris Forrest, the animal control officer.
Okay, you see what it states on there? Dog's supposed to be muzzled at all times?
Yeah, that was July fifteen, twenty twenty.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Is it twenty twenty or is it twenty? Time flies.
Twenty twenty.
The dog still, they take it out on a leash, because the mother does too. Walk it up and down my property line just to show me it's not on the leash.
Okay.
And the dog is psychotic. I mean, right, but it's not muzzled. It's supposed to be muzzled. I keep letting this go. I've had it.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Well, um, I'm, I'm sure it'll be investigated and we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that something Chris Forrest is supposed to follow up on, Mike? I, I'm just asking. I don't know. Who's supposed to follow up on this?
It'll be, it'll be Chris under the mentorship and tutoring of Pete. Okay.
No, I mean, I just wanna make everybody aware that I have tried being a nice neighbor yet again. And I get these petty things that my dog barks, which they do bark. I'm not gonna say they don't, but I never let them bark. No, it's necessary. And when they're, you know, keeping the chickens in while I'm out there, they're working dogs. They're allowed to bark. And it's never been for a long time. Like I said, my animals are not even out. So anyway, I just want something big there. I hope promptly.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Any other citizen comments, items not, not on the agenda?
There's nobody online. Pardon? There's nobody online.
Nobody online. Okay, not, then we'll move on. Presentation of Public Works Asset Management Plan to the Select Board by Chris Forrest, through the Department of Public Works Director. You there, Chris?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen. Uh, so I'm assuming you have in your packets a copy of the slides. I'm not gonna go through the slides, but I wanna pitch, pitch something to the board, and my hope is that you will place it into the newly formed Public Works Committee. So what this is, is a asset management plan. This one focuses on our equipment, uh, namely our prime movers. There's a slide in there that explains what a prime mover is. It makes sense of that. My goal here is, is simple. I really want to focus our efforts and gain a shared understanding and vision with everybody as to what our, what our way forward is for the Public Works Department as a whole. Part of that is knowing who we are and what we have for capabilities, and if we lack any capabilities that the, the town thinks we should have. That said, I tried to pick a novel starting point, and that starting point I decided to look at was our equipment and understand what we have, what condition it is in, and where do we see it five or ten years from now? So really what I'm doing is I'm trying to take a strategic approach to looking at those questions and coming back with a understanding, a shared understanding of how do we get there and, and how do we achieve those milestones? And ultimately, as I said, I started with equipment, which is a small part of what, what I would call a strategic asset management plan that in a perfect world would be, you know, cover the entire town. Not only Public Works, but the Police Department and the Rec, Rec Department, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll really, what I'll do is I'll, I'll sum it up. You know, one of the things I hate doing, and I know everybody else hates, is when someone comes to you and says, I need a new piece of equipment at the last minute. In my mind, there should be no reason for that. And this is a way, maybe not the way, but a way to start a conversation and understand where, where we are at and where we wanna be eventually. So it's a holistic look at that. And, you know, maybe I got seventy percent of the idea correct. Maybe I got less, but I would like to obviously talk about this and get some feedback and make it a discussion so that we could have a product that we have a, a five to ten year outlook on. So we don't have surprises and that we can plan for things and resource them, you know, effectively and rationally. So what I am asking is, is to use this as a starting point, put this into a committee so that we can gain that understanding and hopefully move forward as we see fit.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Questions from the board? Comments?
On the, on the greater work, Chris, are we gonna do that in-house? You've got labor, you've got rebuild transmission.
Oh, yeah, that, that was for context only. So I'll, I'll take a step back and I'll, I'll say what I did is I, I took, I took a quick snapshot of each piece of major equipment that we have, the town has in the Public Works Department. And I kinda described where we were at, their age, what condition they're in. Um, and, and you'll see in what the average lifespan of each piece of equipment is. And by that average lifespan, when we, when we think it needs to be replaced, or establishing a decision point as to a point in time where we should have the discussion of whether we're going to keep it or get a few more years out of that. So really what I'm saying with the greater, uh, on that particular slide is, is yes, that, that equipment would be, or I'm sorry, that work would be done in-house. But what I'm really saying is, is, yeah, it's old, still works, still does the job. But if it did go at this time, that's what a transmission would cost.
Okay. My other question was several, not several, three or four of these slide sheets out of the five or six. It says need to keep up on preventive maintenance. Is there an issue with us keeping up on preventive maintenance?
No, there's not. So what I'm, what I'm really doing, sir, is I'm highlighting the importance of preventive maintenance. And just to go to the last slide, if you wanna look at it, slide fourteen, you'll see in equipment maintenance, uh, equipment maintenance record. So this is a new form that we have implemented with Bob Ward. Um, he is all on board with this. And what I'm really gonna do with this is, is when we talk about a piece of equipment, I wanna be able to tell you how much during that equipment's life cycle it has cost to keep on the road or within a, a specific period of time. Let's say the past year, the past six months, or over its entire lifespan. I just don't have any way to, if you asked me for that today, I have no way to give that to you. So I, I noted it as a deficiency and, and that is something, this is our way of correcting that going forward. If that answers your question, sir.
It does. It does. Thanks, Chris. Any other questions for Chris? Mike? Hello, have any questions?
Joel, you have any questions?
I just, just comment, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a terrific proposal, plan that Chris has brought to us. I think for the town to be able to make decisions regarding intended needs or, or emerging needs, this really ought to be disseminated across the other departments of the town. Because if we can, if we're only focusing on the needs of uh, the Department of Public Works and its equipment, and, and not considering what's emerging in other areas, I think will be shortchanging the town. So I applaud this, and I, I just would urge the manager to urge other department heads to take similar approaches.
Mike?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I, that is a, a great segue into what I had to say, Joel. I did talk to Chris when he presented this to me. We know it's a deficiency across the whole town, and I had, I've had the conversation with the police uh, chief today, as a matter of fact, about sitting down and going through this, and we'll go, what we will do it across all departments. And I, I asked Chris if he'd be willing to come in and, and assist with that, and he wholeheartedly agreed. And so it is something that we will do across all departments. And when I was talking with Chris, we talked about it, the holistic approaches. You know, our capital assets, our, our roads, our buildings, all, all of this stuff. It's not just vehicles. So, um, we will move this thing forward, um, using this kind of as a, a template to do that.
Yeah. Yeah. And Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is a big, this is a big project, just getting all this data together. So what we're, you know, we're taking baby steps towards what's called a strategic plan. And as Mike said, I'm more than happy to share my knowledge in that subject, subject field. I think it would be good, but it's, it's something that's going to take a while. I just feel that especially these purchases, when we talk about two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loaders and hundred thousand dollar vehicles, these are huge investments um, for the town. And, you know, everybody expects a return on the investment. What does that return on investment look like? What is it? Uh, how is it measured? Um, these are things that, you know, help, you know, help, help, uh, help us say that, you know, the money's well spent, right? So this is just the baby step towards it to a, to a broader plan. Um, and it'll probably shake the tree on a few other, few other, um, things within the town, but, um, all in good taste as well. So.
Okay, anything else for Chris? If not, thank you very much, Chris, for your analysis. I'm sure we all appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Hold for fireworks. Mr. Town Manager, you're the fireworks man.
So what you have in, in your packet was a kind of a shock as far as a change to how North Star Fireworks is doing business. Now, when it's, basically, when it's the week, if you go the week prior to Fourth of July, and you go the week following Fourth of July, their policy now is you have to do a minimum of ten thousand dollars of fireworks, which, where before we didn't have to do that. So this is certainly a unbudgeted change to how, for us. And there was a question, I think, on the, I think last meeting, I think Bob asked a question about why the, the budget the year prior was so low as compared to this year's. And, and that answer was, I hope I was able to answer that for you, but we didn't budget it. We had the, the year prior because with COVID, we didn't get to do the, we didn't shoot the fireworks off. We didn't have that event. So there, North Star allowed us to carry those into the next year. So we didn't need to buy them in the next fiscal year. So I took it out of the budget with the caveat saying that we're gonna have to put it back in. And so this year is the year it gets put back in. But we don't budget ten thousand dollars. We budget seventy-five hundred. So to have the fireworks and have North Star be the ones that provide those and, and do the event, we're looking at tender. And they, they are gonna give us the discount, the, the early bird discount. They'll hold that for us. Um, all that means is you get ten percent more fireworks for your, for the dollar. So it's still ten thousand dollars, but but this, this is, as I, I think I've explained before, is there's just, it's coming out of China. The, the plants over there were shut down and it's affecting supply and demand, and they're having, even North Star's having problems getting some products. But if we want to have it, the months are on the Fourth of July weekend. Or the weekend before, the weekend after, it's ten thousand dollars. If we do it outside of that timeframe, we can order the minimum of seventy-five hundred. So the question to the board is, or the, the problem statement's gonna be, we don't have it in the budget this way. But if, if you want to, me to push forward with having the celebration on Independence Day, we're gonna have to find a way to pay for the extra money. Or we don't do it on Independence Day or the weekend prior to the weekend after. And I think I gave you a little bit of, you know, there was, um, the, the tap of the parade in the winter. We were gonna do it a couple of years ago, um, and hold the fireworks that weekend or that, that day, that evening before the, or after the parade. And, um, so there's just an option. I don't, I don't think it's the, the greatest recommendation, but it's something that could be considered. And that would only cost, we'd only have to have seventy-five hundred dollars as a minimum order versus the ten bucks. I'm placing it out there right now, saying it's not in the budget, but if you directed me to tip the piggy bank upside down and shake it, I can define the extra twenty-five hundred dollars. I would certainly do that.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Joel.
I would move that we authorize a manager to, uh, present this issue to the Lake Bomazin Association, uh, requesting a donation of twenty-five hundred dollars in order to hold the fireworks on or around July fourth, with the understanding that, uh, without such a donation, we will hold the fireworks at a different time of year, presumably, uh, in the winter.
Is there a second? There's a second. Discussion.
Yeah, but I'm just a little confused. Mike, you said a minimum order of, you said seventy-five hundred. Is that what you said just now?
If it's outside, if it's on Independence Day, that weekend of Independence Day, or the weekend prior to Independence Day, or the weekend following, it's a minimum of ten thousand dollars for the order. Anywhere outside of those, that timeframe, it would be seventy-five hundred.
Okay, 'cause this, this says five thousand on my sheet. It says if it's held outside, I think, is what it says.
You, you, I, I apologize. You are correct. We spent seventy-five hundred. Their minimum order's five thousand.
Seven hundred and seventy-five hundred.
Right. We have seventy-five hundred budget, so it's over the, we meet the minimum of the five thousand.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, we don't set these off ourselves? These guys come and do it? Okay, so that's where your timing thing is. I was gonna say, why don't we just order the fireworks now?
We could order them now, but we still have, we get on their calendar, and they, they're the ones that execute.
But they execute it. So if they execute it during that time period, it's ten grand? Okay.
Or, or you know, their minimum order still is ten thousand dollars. But I, I didn't ask her, 'cause we don't have licenses to do this. I didn't ask her if we pay ten, if we order ten thousand dollars worth of fireworks, you know, and we're gonna send them off ourselves, how does that in, impact everything? 'Cause we don't have any, any license.
Okay. I didn't know if the fireman went up and did it or what they.
No.
Okay, so they come over and they do it. That's the shortage of help thing is in there.
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Yeah, I know.
Who, who seconded the motion?
Hey, Richard Combs.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, uh, items for discussion on the fireworks and the motion that's on the table?
Uh, is, is, is Mike gonna reach out to the?
To the V A.
Okay. And you'll be at the next meeting. You'll give us an answer?
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Something else? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Oh, motion passed.
Thank you, Joel, for that recommendation.
Thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
Um, moving on to liquor licenses. We have four different businesses that would like to renew their license. Uh, Peter has checked everything out, and there are no problems with any of these, uh, businesses and their liquor licenses. So you wanna do them individually, or you'd like to do them as a group?
Do it as a group.
Is there a motion to approve the liquor licenses as a group?
We'll make a motion that we approve the I got three. These three liquor licenses in a group.
Four.
Four?
You can take them right off the agenda, Mike.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Okay. The four liquor licenses, Castle and Corners Deli, uh, Robo Creamy's and General Store, American Legion Crippens Fellow Post Fifty, and the Lake Bomazin Lodge.
I'll second it.
And a second. Discussion.
Uh, discussion for clarity, the B E E J J Incorporated D V A is Castle and Corner Deli is a second class renewal.
Yep.
Robos Creamy's and General Store L L C is a second class renewal. American Legion Crippens Fellow Post Fifty is a first class, third class, and outside consumption renewal. And Lake Bomazin Lodge L L C is a first class, third class, and outside consumption renewal.
I'll still second it.
I just wanted that in a minute.
Absolutely.
That's okay. Might be important.
Think it has to be. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright. Okay, gotta do some signing, guys.
The only other I think is four, but. Yeah, one, two, they have uh first, third and outside, there should be three places, you got at least two places. Could be three. Can you count those? I got two here for.
Oh, you got just two there?
No, I got two for B E J Castle and Corner Deli. One is for a second class, there's duplicate.
Too many pieces of paper.
This is probably just a copy. Didn't hurt him to be assigned.
No.
You may have an extra copy here, we'll let the town clerk sort it out. Okay, we're not done yet, there's more to come.
This one is uh Lake Bomazin Lodge.
That should have three places as well.
Yep.
They all came in at the same time. Well, thanks.
I believe so, sir.
Okay, moving on. Addition of an attorney to the approved list. Wilmington Campbell, Bet and Stacey, professional counselors, Merrill Brent. Mike, you have something on this?
Um, I think.
A letter for us here.
Yeah, I tried to explain it in the letter and I just, I'd ask that if there's any questions within that, about the letter, I could answer it that way. And we could take the letter.
Any questions from the board, from Mike on, on this?
Joe has a question.
Joe, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Mike, I, I, I totally support the idea of adding an additional attorney or more to our list of approved attorneys. I, I personally was inclined to recommend that we add Gary Cupfer. Uh, partly because of his uh being local and also because based on my experiences with him, he seems to be responsive and competent. So I, I have no objection to adding Merrill Brent, Merrill Bent, excuse me, but am equally interested in supporting the recommendation that we add Gary Cupfer. I don't know whether he is interested frankly.
Um, comments? Questions? I guess Joe has explained his position very clearly. I think we should be asked before we just go ahead and put him on the, pardon, he should be asked before we just go ahead and put him on the, on the approved list, okay?
I would agree.
You know, the only other question I have, this is probably a question for Joe is uh I only know that Mr. Cupper is an attorney, I don't know what his field of expertise is, so perhaps you could help.
Well, I, I can't really uh specify what his expertise is. I, I think he's been involved in a variety of cases that I've heard about. Oh, and I, I don't know that he would necessarily be the correct person, for example, to evaluate the question of the quality, quarry property and its uses. But I do think for many of the cases that have come up before us, uh he probably has competence to uh give us some professional advice.
Any other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion?
We need to have the motion include the firm name, is that correct?
Correct.
I'll make a motion, we add to our approved attorney list, the firm Wilmington Campbell Bet and Stan Z P C. I'm a Merrill Bent.
I second it.
I think I said that correctly.
Okay, any other discussion? Do you wish to include Gary Cupfer in that or?
No, that's a separate issue.
Separate issue, okay.
Separate issue.
All right, okay, all of in favor of the motion as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed, ask unanimously. Second question.
I think it might be appropriate to either ask uh I think it would be appropriate to have the town manager ask Gary Cupper at some point in time if he would be there. It helps the town oftentimes. That makes sense to you, Mr. Burke?
It does.
Okay, is that a motion, Dick?
No, it's just a request with that.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, let's move on then. Signing of the law, the paperwork for the loader, you have that, I believe in your packet. That's to replace the loader, which we agreed upon at a previous meeting. The amount is hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
So I guess there's two of these by mistake, did everybody get two of these?
I didn't get any.
You got them.
You want one of these? I didn't know if there's any difference in them.
No.
Okay.
Well, I thought it was on, I didn't have anything about this in my packet, but I wasn't too worried about it, because I do think we already approved this.
If not, is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the capital equipment note. For the interest of two point three five percent. On a hundred hundred fifty-three thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
And a second. Discussion.
Like, just so you're aware, there's more than one document there for your signatures, there's the the resolution for the capital equipment borrowing and the tax certificate that has the place for the select board to sign. As well.
Okay.
Addition of the cover document, which is the capital equipment.
Yes, I believe I do. Getting mixed up with copies, you know? Thank you, Dick.
Don't do that.
Three places to sign. Does the motion include the three, the three signatures that are necessary? Is that your intent?
Again, yeah. You don't all have to sign this?
Yeah, everybody has to sign it.
What are you talking about, three signatures?
Well, there's three different documents we have to sign.
Okay, three different documents, okay, yeah, include them all, I need to look what they are. If you want them. I don't know if I can begin to do that, let's see.
The first one is the resolution for capital equipment borrowing. That's the second, second page.
Capital equipment borrowing, resolution, okay, then the tax certificate, capital equipment borrowing. And is there a third one, Mike?
The original capital equipment, no.
Okay. Capital equipment, no. All three documents.
Okay.
Hopefully she's got that.
Guys. Okay, any other, any other discussion on this? If not, all those in favor of signing all three documents indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. There you go, Bob.
Okay.
This won't take it long in signing the liquor licenses.
I started the last thing here. I have, I saw him going through the gate.
It is, the one I saw.
Yes.
Yeah, what's your name, George?
Okay. Anytime, George.
Okay, let's see here. Both per rule of quote to purchase virtual meeting equipment includes installation and labor.
You missed one.
Pardon?
Okay, no, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry. And, and to clarify, Mr. Chairman, for the fire department community room.
For the community room? Okay, all right.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the hardware and installation for conferencing solution with two cameras at the Castleton uh fire department, the Castleton Emergency Response building, immunity room for a amount of six thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars from Vermont Digital.
There's a second, also I got a discussion.
Joe?
I don't seem to have the I back that, yeah, I got that, but I don't, I don't have it originally. All we have to do is approve this, right? No, we don't have to, okay?
Joe's got a question.
All right, all those in favor? I'm sorry, hold it.
Joe's got a, Joe's got a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just two comments and I, I offer these as a person participating remotely tonight. One is that the, as I recall, when we are together in the room, uh, we end up having to look back behind us over our shoulders at the image of the audience. And I think it would be preferable to have the select board looking towards the physically present audience at an image of the virtual audience, if you understand what I'm driving at there. The other comment I would make is a small point, and that is the podium right now obscures two of the members of those sitting at the table. And that ought to be off center so that we can get a picture of everybody at the table as well as whoever it is that comes to the podium to address the board.
Okay.
I'm not sure that that changes the specifications of the uh order. I would hope it wouldn't. Uh, but I do think especially the having the, the, the ability of the select board to look out into the audience of the physical present, present citizens as well as the virtually present would be a really good idea.
Sounds good, good questions.
I'm not an expert on this, but that would tell me that we probably need two projectors and two screens, one over there and one over there. Something along those lines.
We're going to use televisions, that's what part of it, so you guys can see it on the television. There's no really place to project it here, not very well, so without shining into people's faces and then, you know, so it's a, it's going to be to use the television.
Any other questions on this? Do we have a motion on this?
I think so.
Oh, yeah, we, we have to, we have to approve it certainly.
Dick made the motion, I second it.
Okay, and the amount is in there, the total?
Yes.
Mike?
Um, I, I think at the previous meeting, this was discussed about using the ARPA funds for, for this project. Um, and there's been nothing to talk about that because this is not budgeted normal, uh this was only to use the ARPA funding.
So should I amend my motion rather as a management?
Sure.
I will amend my motion.
Okay. To include the money council, ARPA funding, all right. Okay, is there, is there, is there a total on this? Then where did you get the total? Did you say a total?
Well, I actually, I actually had it, my, my copy didn't have a total, so I added it up.
Okay.
Numbers together, the high end of the installation, which was a range of six thirty to eight forty. And you add that, those three together, your worst case number is the six thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars.
Six thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars, okay.
And it, it will come, Mr. Chairman, it will come in less than that. Um, Vermont Digital gave this quote to me, I didn't go out there and found all of this stuff um at a less expensive, same, same stuff, just less expensive. I ran it past Vermont Digital again, so that's why I said it. If you did not exceed six thousand four hundred ninety-three, I'm confident it'll come in under that uh based on what I've already researched.
About not to exceed.
But just as long as it isn't, if you guys, you know, you did not exceed, so that's.
My motion would do both words.
Yep.
Motion, you want to amend it again, Dick?
I did, my motion does both words.
Okay. All right, any other questions on this? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Tax map, annual contract, Artographic Associates Incorporated. I believe you had that in your packet.
This is just our normal renewal, this isn't counting the extra stuff that I talked to the board about, the mapping stuff that Jonas and Mary Jo wanted, this is just our normal uh renewal. Not including the extra stuff. This is budgeted, correct?
Okay, now that everyone's had a chance to look at it, is there a motion? Make a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the tax map maintenance proposal.
That thirty-five hundred plus fifteen dollars apartment?
No, we're not doing the fifteen dollars.
We're not doing, so it's a flat thirty-five.
Flat thirty-five hundred dollars.
I'll say, I'll second it.
Add a second discussion.
Can you just include who it is, so the cardio graphic, uh, cartographic associates?
Yes.
Cartographic Associates Incorporated.
Okay, anything else on this? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks for my notes, I forgot, I didn't get right down who made the motion, who seconded it.
I, I made the motion, I don't know who seconded it.
My seconded it, thank you.
There you go, Bob.
It's only four spots on here, but. Okay.
Okay. Assignment of warning articles to the select board members for town meeting, I believe that's in your packet, and I'm sure anyone who wishes to talk with Mike prior to the meeting for more clarification, he'd be more than happy to meet with you or by phone or virtual. Any questions on this?
What I'm gonna do here is, just you're letting me, who's gonna do your article? You voted against the budget, correct?
I got it. I'm on here to do it.
Okay.
But once I had my say, that was it. Okay.
So there's no. The question wasn't, there's no con, nobody has, I tried to stay away from, if you're affiliated with an agency and, you know, those type of things, so there's no nobody has any conflict of interest with anything that's on, even assigned, but I don't think so.
It looks fine.
I will need to sit down later. Things I wanna make sure I understand totally, other than that. If anybody needs to meet at night or whatever, after work, something like this, I mean.
Any other questions on this? I guess we've got our assignments. I don't know if we need approval of this. No. Okay, we, we got it, that's it. Okay, let's move on then. Uh, managers report.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, what, what do you wanna do, highway mileage?
That's what I wondered. I have it right here.
Do you wanna do that now?
Sure.
Just so, Joe, you're not gonna copy that, cause it was given to us late today.
This is my understanding, this is the same number that I had last year. And all you need is, uh, our approval as a motion for, to assign him agree with the certificate of highway mileage at the year ending February tenth, twenty twenty-two. Is that correct? So.
Could you repeat that wording?
Oh, yeah, I'm just kinda making it up with my mind right now, Allison, hang on just a second. I guess I'm gonna say that I wanna make a motion that we will authorize or approve and sign the certificate of highway mileage for the town of Castleton the year ending February tenth, twenty twenty-two. It includes a total highway mileage of seventy-six point seven one five miles.
Hold a second.
Add a second. Any discussion? Being done, hearing done, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
There is one point on that, that was, um, that doesn't account the four point eight eight miles of class four.
Could you repeat that? Mike doesn't include what?
Well, let, let the board decide if they wanna read.
Okay, let me amend my motion, please, Allison, before we, Mr. Chairman, with your permission.
Okay, wait, but Joe already abstained from the vote, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, apparently I made a mistake, uh, but I should have included the four point eight eight miles of class four road in that total, so it would be somewhere over, just a little over eighty-one miles of roads.
We could do that. Well, you just say, to, or to improve four point eight eight miles of class four.
The original number was seven sixty-seven point one five?
Seventy-six point seven one five plus four point eight eight of class four.
Seven one five, okay.
Plus four point eight eight miles of class four road. Welcome in.
And Mike agreed with that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, now the manager's report.
Did you?
You okay, Allison?
Did you vote?
Yeah, by saying aye.
Aye.
Those are both.
And I've explained.
Yeah, that's one, go abstain down that one, Allison.
You okay now, Allison?
Yeah, that's why I was asking about it, cause he abstained before the vote, before the amendment.
Okay. Want to do it again, boys?
Sure. I think we got it right now, but, uh, what Joe and Allison rule on that?
I think we're set.
Okay, okay. If nothing, we'll move on to our managers' report. Mike?
Does everybody have a copy in, in front of them?
Yes.
I do. Um, so the, why, there's a meeting next week. To this, the first meeting is at six o'clock to discuss the pedestrian accessibility scoping study. That's here, in this building. They've, uh, they're ready to do four alternatives, to present four alternatives to, to select work. So that's, again, next week at six PM. Um, there's gonna be a campaign, um, to go around and along the Main Street area, hand out flyers, we posted it on, um, the town website, and and we'll get, we'll get the word out, just so we can get back to participation.
So, that's a week from tonight, the twenty-first?
Yes.
Starting at six o'clock?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure everybody knew that's all.
It's here, right?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike. Uh, bike and pedestrian grant, um, I did receive the paper, uh, the official award of the, um, small, um, the bike and pedestrians, um, small scale grant that's for sidewalks and council and corners to Parsons Hills area. Um, the next step on that, I put in there is, is beginning to look at the easements and, uh, highway access permits, Vermont, VTrans eleven eleven permit. Uh, so that's something that, uh, I'm gonna need to reach out to attorney to, uh, help do that. But that's, we got the final, or we get the, the actual approval in writing, so that can move forward, and if things go well, um, my, my, uh, my goal is to have this before the select board in the end of March. So with all this, this up done to, um, if the board wants to move forward to putting out the bid. Be nice to see that thing done this year. We don't have to go, because we don't have to jump through all the hoops that we would under a pulse, uh, scale, uh, grant from VTrans. Makes it a little bit easier to get the project, uh, going. So that's on page one, uh, any questions on those two things?
Yeah, where, where, where would we get the ninety-two thousand dollars from, Mike?
It's already budgeted, it's in, it's in the sidewalk, um.
It's already been approved?
Yeah, it's, it's in the, uh, we put forty-five thousand dollars a year in the sidewalk.
Okay.
Money in the reserve account.
Okay.
Uh, okay, one question's on my page two. The grants and aid, um, I had to change that Chris and I weren't able to meet, so we're gonna meet on the twenty-second um, to look at, uh, what, we're gonna have to hit Barker Hill for that into the project. That's where we didn't finish the culvert last year. We have the culvert, we've already paid for it. So we wanna get reimbursed through the grant, um, for that culvert, it was like fifty, six hundred dollars. Um, and, uh, get the state, those road segments on Barker Hill complete. If we do that, I talked to Chris about it. Um, if we do the, the remaining segments on Barker Hill, the road's done. They'll put the roads fully in compliance with the standards. We have, we have to meet requirements each year, uh, starting next year, so, um, that would be a good thing. Now, number two on transportation. I'm, I have to meet with, with, uh, Joe Rice and Chris to look, to review, have them pitch a proposal to me. They wanna somehow put some covers over the bins, and there's a couple different courses of action they're gonna brief to me. Um, and then we settle to that, then I become the select one. Um, but the first step is to let them pitch it to me, Joe in particular, um, with Chris there to try to strengthen their case. Uh, I'm on, I'm moving to page three. Uh, the house, household hazardous waste days are now posted on the town website, under the transfer station, so, uh, coming up in April, that's the first stage. No questions, I'm gonna go on to, on page four.
How many, how many hazardous waste days do we have in the night?
Three.
Three.
Uh, page four. On, under five, paragraph five, the highway department. Uh, Chris Foraker has really been diligent and working on trying to find a way to complete this project. It's a, it's becoming, or became, not becoming, it became much more expensive than originally anticipated. So, thinking outside the box, Chris and Brent had, uh, spoke to Josh Carthall from Rivers and Streams to see if they could, instead of putting a concrete box culvert under that road, which was up about eighty-six thousand dollars in the high end. With a, a metal squash culvert, which would be cheaper. Um, it will, it won't last as long, but it's, it'd certainly be less expensive. Um, so they're working through that right now to get some prices on that, and Josh is gonna come up with the drawing, because even, even if we use a, a metal squash culvert, we still have to have the aquatic organism passage baffles and stuff in there, so they're gonna work through all this and be able to come back to me with a, with a proposal and the cost, cause it got out of, it got out of control. FEMA gave us basically thirty-nine thousand dollars, and the concrete box culvert alone was eighty, is eighty-six. Uh, but they didn't give us money for all that, because it had, they only gave us money for the damage that was done to bring it back to pre-storm conditions. And, uh, the, the box culvert was inside of that, no, they, they said no, it wasn't damaged. But the wing walls are all damaged, and it's gonna become a monumental, uh, task to try to piece that thing back together. So many people look at this, gentlemen, so we, we weren't going on a wing and prayer with this. We've had VTrans, we've had, um, engineers look at it, we've had contractors look at it, and this is gonna be monumental. The only thing we haven't done is we haven't reached out to VTrans, um, with the railroad line, because um, that was built in, like, I, I, it was like nineteen oh seven or nineteen seventeen or something like that. Um, if you, I don't remember that, Chris, but it's old, let's put it that way. Um, and because it's all tied into that, that, uh, that trestle, whatever we do, we need to make sure that we're not causing damage to the, the apartments and the, the foundation for that, so um, that's something that we're gonna look at, reaching out to VTrans and getting their, uh, getting their input. What, what we were hoping was they have some liability in this, and that there'd be some money that would come our way, uh, because of it. But we won't know that until we ask, and it is our honor, right, or to do that.
Mike, I don't have that report, where, what, where are you on that project? What street?
It's the FEMA, it's a South Street Trestle. And it's a, it's a night, it's a leftover project from April of two thousand nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Joe.
Uh, i- is this a project that would qualify for ARPA funds if we can't, uh, finance it in, in the other way?
Yes, it is, Joe.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions on the trestle? Page five, um, highway garage. Um, I think I, I, I told the board this, but I wanna be sure, um, this year passive, every year they offer scholarships, or, or a grant, I'm sorry, grant, not, not a scholarship, grant. And it's ten thousand dollars, and the town has to pay fifty percent of that, so five thousand. And you get ten thousand dollars worth of, of stuff, but you only pay five thousand. This year, they're paying for a hundred percent of it, so ten thousand dollars worth of stuff. Um, and that stuff is what they give us the money for is to look at the safety assessments that's been done by our loss consultant, Wade Monsieur, which you've seen some of those in the past. Um, with that ten thousand dollars, everything that we've been had deficiencies that they, he's found, will have corrected. So, uh, Justin, um, put together uh, initial stuff, and, and Chris Foraker did the stuff for Public Works. Um, I worked with the fire department. So we've got a list of stuff to, to purchase, and the, the good news is that all the deficiencies that we've had for safety violations and something that will be resolved through this process. Uh, under dispatching. So that's, that's just starting to really get legs and grow, uh, this, what might cost the towns, municipalities in the future for dispatching. And there's a meeting, um, tomorrow that I'll be participating in, and, and Pete's also participating. Uh, the, the state's trying to, trying to throw some money at this to build some regional dispatch centers, you call P-SOCS. And one of them will be in Rutland County. So there's been some initial conversations of where that might be located, and the Rutland City Police Department is one of those locations, because the sheriff's department no longer occupies the whole floor there. So, uh, this is what, what the bottom, I'll give you the bottom line is once, if they build these, they use, they're gonna use about eight million dollars to build them, they're gonna keep about three million to fund the first year's uh, operating costs, but after that, it's gonna be on the backs of the municipalities to pay those operating costs, which we, at this point, don't really know what they are. We heard upwards of eight hundred thousand dollars could be that number. Um, then there was talk about how to fund it, um, and the county tax was on the table for discussion, and I've had some residents already call me about this upset that we already paid for this through our taxes, and why are we having to get hit on again? Um, again, it, it hasn't really gone through its, uh, approval, there's a process of what they're gonna, how they're gonna move forward. Uh, but I will know, probably know more, um, after the meetings tomorrow, and I'll keep sharing information with the board. Uh, and Pete's already involved in it. Any questions on dispatching?
Just a quick thing, that there's probably someday in the future, there's at least five towns in Rutland County. There's dispatch through Washington County, New York. I guess my question is, if we wind up, you know, the towns in Rutland County, we're gonna have the. I guess my question is, if we wind up, you know, the towns in Rutland County, we're gonna have to share this pie. Will those five towns be expected to contribute to that, or will they be exempt from that?
That hasn't, nothing's been discussed about that.
I'm just bringing this up so that we quickly we get this.
Yeah, exactly. And, and what has been discussed is that they have a better service through Washington County, New York, but Washington County has been. Approached before and they just don't have the ability to dispatch for more. At this point, but money talks, so who knows? We're, I just wanted to let the board know that it's been sitting dormant for a while, and it's, it's really starting to come alive right now. Public outreach. Did everybody get a copy of the email, a letter from Chief Mantello? So he's, he's hosting and facilitating a community meeting. In residents who are in the blasting zone of Camaro's quarry. And the owners of the quarry, and owner of the quarry. That's scheduled for the seventeenth of February at six P M. here in this room. And she's looking at about two hours for that, facilitating that meeting. And it, it's all, it's complied with the MSHA, the Mine Safety and Health Administration. And the Vermont Department of Public Safety's recommendations for notification and warning system. So, that is. Starting, you know. Hopefully, some of this stuff can be addressed that's going on. Jonas did tell me he has a letter of violation drafted for, for the quarry, that's a two hundred dollar fine. The towns.
From the town government, you said Chief Mantello is gonna be at this meeting?
I'm gonna be there. But as far as what, you know, the select board, I, I, you guys just found out about it, so I.
Yeah, there's a conflict with Neil, I also, the C D R D in the same night.
Yeah, that's a meeting in Florida, we moved it over to the town office.
So I'd be very much interested in finding out what, what was discussed this year.
I know that, I, I've had correspondence back and forth with the fire chief. And he is read into this as well, I will verify, but I, I'm assuming. He knows what's going on over that, because it's in his neck of the woods too, but I'm not sure if he's gonna be there.
I'll ask him, inform somebody that's, that's me at the speed of appreciation.
I'll try to go, what did I do?
Pardon?
I'll try to go from here.
It's on Thursday, next week.
Just coming Thursday. Yeah, I'll try to make that one, I should be able to make that.
Yeah, it'd be great if you could catch me up on, because I'm gonna be a bit.
Anybody have any questions on that?
The folks were notified of this meeting, right?
Yes, and I think it's about time we found those. Where the state, I mean, there's plenty of walls that are supposed to protect us, but nothing has been done. And I'm, tell you the truth, quite tired of it, but it must, my husband by feet, and just so I can give you an idea. Just walk in, back to the dogs again, here's my dog, does that show you the rock, the chunk of rock? It was embedded right in the fence, feet from where my husband was. And here's other stuff, this rock. Hit the tree in the eastern side of our property. Broke off, hit the ground, flew, I'll throw it yourself. Forty feet, another fifty feet, then wedged that tightly into our fence. And then flew pieces of it, or it could have been other rock, that landed, my husband had his duck and literally covered his head, and it went over his head, landed right front. So this is something the town had better address.
Plus on the eastern edge of our property.
There's hundreds of pieces, yeah. On the road, I mean, that's a good sized chunk. Would you people like that landing in your yard? Feet from your house, by your doorway? And then we even had one piece that landed on the north side of the house, right by our electric. When the electric comes into the house, that was a foot away from our foundation. Like, this is serious, and this town has not addressed this since two thousand three, when it started really hot tub. And now that is one of the town's priorities, is to protect citizens' safety. I don't know what it's gonna take to get to that point, but I'm not sitting back and letting this stuff keep occurring. So I hope they come up with something good. Because there are federal, state, and local.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Hey, Mike, wanna go on again?
Um, page six. Just so you know, if you weren't aware, there was a fire up on Zalbo Road that literally was called in. But nobody got, nobody was in the structure that hurt, killed or. They had some equipment that was, got stuck and brakes that locked up on, on the ladder, because it air brakes, it froze, but. Mike Holden was up there, Mike Smith did some clearings to help facilitate apparatus getting in there. But just so you know, there was a fire up there.
We got a garage, Mike?
Yeah. There was some equipment in there or something to save somewhere. So apparatus, under, under paragraph, sub-paragraph E, apparatus, engine two remains out of service. As of this morning, I got an email from Chief Goyad. That they did get initial estimate on to repair of engine two, and they're looking at. It's either twenty-five to thirty, or thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars to, to fix that. I'd say high on the thirty-five thousand dollar end. And we're not even sure if the vehicle's really worth that much money. So, I'll, I'll get more information, I'll share it with you, but he did follow up like he was asked to, he did get. An estimate from a, a organization or a grant. Certified, that certified to do this type of work.
That's to fix the frame, Mike, on that?
Yeah, just to be specific. They gotta, they, they wanted to take it down and check the frame a little more, that kind of stuff, but anyway. We, he's, I just wanted to let you know, he's followed through on what he was asked to do.
Sure.
And now it's just making that assessment, coming back to the board, let the board know. That's what they wanted to do. Especially to the committee. No questions, I'm gonna move on. Page seven. You already know, we already talked about the information meeting on the twenty-first, at six o'clock here. This, the New England P V A stuff, without getting any, any real details. I, I haven't been able to reach out or get a response back from the rep there, so I did talk to the chief, and I talked to Justin. Chief today, Justin. Saturday, late Saturday night. He was gonna, Justin's gonna reach out to us. I said, maybe I have a bad email. So, he's gonna follow, try to solicit a couple of dates from him, so we can start taking off the negotiations. For the renegotiating, New England P V A contract. Public concerns, Jan, I'm later here, so.
I have one question on that, what? You know, I just wanted to address before, I showed Jim that letter, of what they, decision they had made on that dog. And that I hope that they take that into consideration, let me know what else I need to show you, the fact that the dog has not been mugged. And that's part of the reason my dogs bark, because that thing goes crazy next door. And then they bark, because they're afraid that they're gonna be attacked again, which has happened so many times, like we did. So I will get you, let me know what you need, and I will supply that information.
Thank you.
Because that may take care of part of the problem.
Already did it, Merrill, Ben, Green Mountain Power, so I'm still waiting, I, I asked Karen to do something for me. I spelled Castle on it. To reach out to the medical or the health center to find out who I need to talk to about. Putting in the light bulb, I'll share that. And as of today, I, I didn't have any response back, so continue to, I did drive out here again, it was. Starving, it is better out there, you can see a lot better, and then you guys know about the one on Castle, and this, this is about the Castle and Medical One. That light was put in and installed, so we did get a visit from the resident there thanking us for that.
Well, I will say though, that the entrance to the medical center, always a better one there smelling of it.
Yeah.
You know, at three o'clock in the morning, when you're grabbing a fire truck back and you're looking for that driveway, it's a lot easier to find when there's smelling of it. If they're in the other nine months of the year, it's not so easy. Okay, what else you have, Mike?
That concludes, minus the executive session, and I'm not sure, you got, just so you know, Mr. Chairman. Chief Mantello has joined the meeting, and whether or not there will be an executive session. To discuss labor relations contracts. He's here, just in case you guys decide to do that, I couldn't get back in touch with him earlier, because I wasn't able to get.
Okay, any other, any other questions for Mike? If not, we'll move on to the first disorders for approval. We have one here, Mike, or Bob, want me to give that to you?
Oh. Make a motion to approve purchase order number zero four eight zero three one two. Aqua Tech Environmental for the total of two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
And it is for? You read that to me.
Permit required, two species wet test. State permit required, state, state permit required, two, two species wet test.
I'll second it. And the second discussion on this purchase order, what is the two species wet test? It tells you on that second page. Not yet.
What's, what's the first word of the company name?
Aqua Tech, A Q U A T E C, Aqua Tech. Environmental Incorporated.
Thank you.
You need this back? Yep. Although, although in favor of the motion to prove. The purchase order for Aqua Tech Environmental, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passed. Now we move on to the warrants. Make a motion, we approve warrant number zero two one four R for six hundred and fifty dollars. Warrant zero two one four for eighty-two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-eight cents. Warrant zero two one zero for five thousand seven hundred and one dollars and thirty-three cents. Warrant zero two zero three for twenty-three thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-two cents. Warrant zero one two seven for ten thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Warrant zero two one zero P for sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Warrant zero two zero three P for sixteen thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. And warrant zero one two seven D for eighteen thousand sixty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. Second, second, discussion on the warrants. Very none, although in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Yeah, I believe we have three other warrants here also.
We'll make a motion for warrant number zero two one one P for six hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. Number zero two zero four P for six hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. Number zero one two eight P for six hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second, and second discussion. I recuse myself. You recuse yourself, although in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And Dick recuses himself, here you go, Bob.
I talked to him a couple of weeks ago, it's on the schedule for getting a little Lafayette's to get them down here to. To do it, knowing that they have the town, the crew has to remove the old stuff and the cables and stuff, so they're, they're tracking it.
I forgot to mention, but in select board comments and concerns, a lot of dead trees on the side of our roads, I've noticed. There's one up on Sand Hill Road, I just can't believe it hasn't dipped over yet. Woodpecker's gone three quarters of the way through it.
That was, that one's been reported.
Oh, it has?
Yeah, Bob Ward went up and looked at it.
That's one that I noticed, there's, there's a few others around town.
I got a call from a concerned resident about this entry.
Okay. It's, it'd be interesting to go look at it, the way they did the woodpecker, it looks just like an owl. It's got a nose that comes down, and it could be, it's pretty cool. You wanna go look at it before they take it down. Anyone else, or recap? If not. Do we wish to deal with? The negotiations between the town and the New England Police Benevolent Association. This evening, Joe and Mike, what are your thoughts on this?
I'd rather wait, Joe's back here, if you don't mind, Joe's gonna do that.
Well, I, I'm happy to have that conversation, at least for starters this evening. I've got some thoughts.
Okay, if we didn't get the ball rolling, okay? Would somebody therefore like to make a motion to, going to executive session with the town manager and the police chief?
I will make a motion, and we go into executive session for labor relations and contracts.
With the town manager and the police chief and the select board at eight thirty.
Second, any discussion? Not all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, executive session.
Awesome, I'll have to catch up with you. After the meeting tomorrow or something, or I'll have Karen follow up with you.
Okay, yeah, she sends me the recording, so just make sure it's recorded when you come out is all.
Will do.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay.
Make a motion and we come out of the executive session at eight forty-seven with no action taken.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
And a second, any discussion? If not, all of the favor indicate by saying aye. Is there another motion?
Do we need any more executive session?
Yep.
So that would be for personnel? We'll make a motion and we go into executive session with the board and the town manager only at eight forty-eight.
Is there a second? Personnel, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, we're in executive session personnel with the town manager.
Thanks, Peter.
Make a motion, we come out of the executive session with no action taken at nine oh seven.
Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Is there another motion?
Make a motion with her.
Is there a second?